Twenty second, twenty nineteen, and the zoning board of adjustments is now at order. And I believe that the first thing that we have on our agenda is communications from the public. So, do we have any communications from the public? Seeing that there are none, the second thing for consideration and possible action items are appointment of a chairman and a vice chair. I believe those are both, both of those are two-year appointments, and Aubrey, a new enlightening, is my term up at this time, please, is my term up as vice chair?
You can actually remain vice chair. I just put that on there in case you were voted in to be chair. We would need a new vice chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. I can't use this one.
No.
Okay. I'm not going to accept nomination as chair.
Okay.
So, we're going to have a new chair and a new vice chair. That's what I'm saying, that's what I was asking, is there any term left as vice chair for me?
I don't have those dates in front of me. I have it upstairs on my computer.
Okay. Because I think it's been two years.
Actually, I think it's been, I think we're overdue because we should have been.
I was going to say, I think it's been probably been except two years.
Yes, because we haven't met at all this year, so I do think it has been.
Because we haven't met this year.
Yes.
And so, I believe there is an opportunity for nomination for both chair and vice.
Vice chair, that is, I think you're correct.
So, then on this board, or the chair would accept nominations for both chair and vice chair, and we'll start with the position of chair. So, do I hear nomination for chair?
I served some time ago, and I've had my time of it. Thank you.
Can the chair make nomination?
Mm-hmm.
If Phillip would accept, I'd like to ask if Phillip would accept the position of chair.
I will, but I will need some help.
Well, Phillip, I'd be more than help, willing to help prompt you in the procedure, as well as, I'm sure, the House attorney, but there is a very simple procedure that is followed, and I'll be more than happy to help you with that.
All right. Thank you.
Does the board need to vote on that?
Yes, we need a second and a vote.
So, all those that are in favor of Phillip?
I'm sorry.
Are there any other, yeah. Well, are there any other nominations for that position? Well, then I suggest nominations are closed, and all those in favor, vote.
We need a second on the.
Do we still need a second?
Mr. O'Brien?
Is there a second? Okay. And then all those in favor? So, from this point forward, two years, for the next two years. Now, we need a vice chair. Vice chair, of course, would fill in when Phillip is unable to handle his duties. So, we're now taking nominations for vice chair. Again, I have handled both chair and vice chair for a number of years. I would like for somebody else to take that opportunity. Somebody that hasn't served in that position for a while. So, that needs to be one of the.
We do have another regular member who's not here tonight, Glenn Mintz.
Nominate the person who isn't here.
Well, I don't.
That's not real fair. And if they're not here to accept.
I'm a little apprehensive. However, I have been nominated and elected into positions when I wasn't there, but.
Mike, are you interested in the position?
I would take vice chair.
Well, are you, well, would someone like to nominate?
I would nominate Mike as for vice chair.
All right. Mike has been nominated as vice chair. Are there any other nominations? There has been a nomination of Mike and a second. I don't see any other nominations, so we'll say nominations are closed. All those in favor of Mike? I see none opposed. So, Mike, you're now going to be vice for the next two years.
All right.
As of tonight.
Your answer.
So, now, approval of the.
General.
Would you like, are we asking them to take over at this point? Well.
You sure you don't want to just stay there and finish?
Let me get it out of the way.
We'll see.
Five minutes into your first meeting, you're in charge.
Phillip, the mic is on.
Yes, it is. So, the next item on the agenda would be the approval of the minutes from the November twenty-seventh, twenty-eighteen meeting.
Make a motion. Make a motion that we accept as recorded. Second motion.
Motion is passed. We have a vote. All approved.
Just because you're getting filmed, you should say, "All those in favor," and everybody raise their hand.
All those in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. So, it passed? All right. The next item on the agenda, items for discussion, is the discussion regarding the number of regular and alternate members appointed to the zoning board of adjustment.
Yeah, I'll kick it off and then let you add in. So, this is just a discussion item, just to possibly amend the number of regular members on the zoning board of adjustment. We're just bouncing around ideas, and since you are the board, we wanted to get your input. If y'all had any, you know, significant concerns, either for or against the proposal. So, the idea was to have seven regular members instead of five regular members, and then right now, we have four alternate members, and if we went to seven regular, we would have two alternate members. So, total of nine members still, but it would be seven regular, two alternate, instead of the five regular and four alternate. State law does not, it just says you have to have a minimum of five. Also, state law also says that in order for a variance or anything that y'all approve, has to be approved by a minimum of seventy-five percent of the board. So, which, if you have five regular members, that's four, and if you have seven regular members, that's six. So, my initial thought was if we had seven members, I initially thought that the seventy-five percent would only be five, and that would be an easier quorum, but since it's six is required, then there's really no difference, you know, it's actually more difficult because you're having to have six people here, six people to approve instead of the four that we have now. In the email I sent you, I did look into other cities, what other cities have as far as their ZBOA boards. Pearland does the five regular, four alternate. Missouri City and League City also, let's see, Missouri City is five and four. League City is five regular, two alternate. City of Plano is eight regular, two alternate. Tomball is five regular, four alternate. Frisco is five regular, three alternate, and Denton is six and three. So, the majority is the five regular. And if Steve wants to add, I brought this up in a workshop to city council at their last regular meeting, and it's been brought up to the planning and zoning commission. In order to change this, the P and Z commission would have to make a recommendation, and we would have to do a public hearing to change the zoning ordinance, to change this requirement.
Yeah, so I'm your council liaison, and it's been six months ago or so, we talked about this in a session, and then it got brought up last month at city council to talk about. You know, should we go to seven or stay with the five? And, you know, there's not, you know, an obvious answer one direction or another, but we wanted your opinion. In my opinion, when people have come up in front of this board, you know, it's, most times, it's their last step, you know, to get relief on something. And, you know, having more people, I think, makes the appearance of being fairer, but I don't think it really, you know, is compelling. The other thing is that, you know, we really need to have members that can be here as well. So, if you go to seven, that makes, it makes it a little harder to get everybody here. But, but we wanted to have your opinion, planning and zoning, Richard and others, they're here to listen to you guys, to see if you have a strong opinion, one direction or another, on whether we should, we should change the number. As Aubrey says, in either case, two people can kill something. Okay? So, if you have five or you have seven, if you have two people who say no to a variance exception, it's gone. You can, you can have one say no in either case, and it would pass. But I'll sit down, we wanted to hear you guys have some discussion on this, one direction or another.
Thank you.
Well, Aubrey, on this second page here, this one with the green one?
Mm-hmm.
And I was looking under summary and originating cause of proposal for senior staff to change the ZBO consistent with state law. Is that talking about the five to seven?
No, there was another sheet before that one that talks about the number of members.
Yeah, and I saw that, and I know, so that comment is not relevant to changing.
No, that's the next, that's the next item.
Okay, okay. Because I was trying to figure out how that comment was consistent. I'm, okay, Rockanne, I'm concerned about having a quorum here. More than one time, we've had issues with literally getting enough people here, and if it weren't for Linda being here every time, literally, we would have issues. And Mr. Graybad has been pretty good, too. And, of course, now I know Michael's going to be here, and, of course, Phillip's going to be here. But, but we've had a problem with quorum, and I don't know that, I know that you said seven, you felt like those that are making the appeal, the petitioner, felt that maybe if there were seven people up here, they felt more comfortable. I'm not sure that I, that I gathered the same perspective, that just having seven people up here makes them feel like they're getting a more just cause, or a just decision, rather. And I look at this list of cities, and all but two are using five. So, I'm not sure that the changing from five to seven is warranted, because I think we would have issues with quorum. Frankly, that's my biggest concern.
I agree.
Particularly lately, because we haven't met very often, and sometimes people forget that they're supposed to be here.
No, I agree fully.
Thank you.
I agree with you, too. I don't think that the outcome.
Yeah, I think seven is more intimidating to the person making the request, but so far as having a quorum, this paragraph where it says that if a person is absent, an alternate member must or can be appointed by the mayor or city manager, that's in paragraph C.
Does that mean that if we have somebody absent, that the city manager or the mayor needs to be here to appoint one of our alternates?
No, this, this is the appointment of our board members, so we appoint, right now, we appoint five regular members and four alternate members, so those are appointed. That, that's, they, they serve their three-year terms. That doesn't mean each meeting.
But if vacancy among the alternate members.
If somebody, if one of our.
Before that. Or the sentence before that.
Yeah, this was.
In the absence of one or more regular members, they would serve when requested by the mayor or city manager.
Yes, that.
The chairman can appoint one to come up here and serve, as we did tonight.
Yeah, alternate board members serve in the absence of one or more regular members.
When requested to do so.
I see, okay.
When I read that, I do see his perspective. It says, "The alternate members to serve in the absence of one or more regular members when requested."
Yeah, that should say by the chairman.
Yes.
Yeah, I think.
It says by the mayor. Is, is that just a?
I think that was a slight mistake that will need to be changed. We need to review the original ordinance with the five and four to make sure that's the correct wording.
Yeah, because that suggests that either the mayor or the city manager would have to be here.
Yeah.
For an alternate to be called up. Is that correct?
But look at it, but I'm not really sure that that's necessary address in a meeting. Because it, but if you read the very top of it, though, if you go, "In addition," I know, here at C, "In addition, there shall be likewise appointed two alternate board members to serve in the absence of one or more regular members when required to do so," and then you go down to vacancy, because it talks about, again, a vacancy among the alternate members is to be filled in the same manner as a vacancy above, or basically above, among regular members.
See, right here, it says, "In absence of one or more members when requested to do so by the mayor," so this is during a regular meeting.
Do you take, I just, maybe I don't take it as that, I take it as, I see where you're coming from, but I take it as maybe that when they wrote it, the different perspective was it was for just a regular meeting.
Yeah, I think the intent is, the way it is now, the mayor and the city council makes the appointments of the five regular and the four alternate, and then it's up to the chairman to call up an alternate to fill in for, so that there's a quorum present.
That has historically been the case, and I'm sure that's what the intent is. I just certainly would want the ordinance, the, the ordinance to reflect that.
Yeah, we'll definitely make sure it's reflected that way.
And then under A, rather, yeah, A, "The board of adjustments shall consist of," and it says, "Seven members appointed by city council for a term of two years." Was that just for purposes of discussion?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Did we go ahead and discuss the five versus seven?
Yes, please.
I've been on this board a long, long time, and I don't think that adding two more members would make much difference as to the outcome of hardly any of our votes. We are very, very friendly board up here. I mean, people come in with something, and it doesn't fit, we will work and work and try to maneuver, you know, to get something that satisfies the city, the neighbors, and whoever's coming in. So, I think that we, we come across as a very friendly, cooperative board, you know, we do the right thing, but we really work hard with anybody that comes in here to try to work out a solution without just turning them down. So, I don't think that, you know, if we add two more members, we get the problem like we were talking about, of having enough people here, and I just, I think we're good the way we are.
Okay, thank you.
To me, it, it seems like it would be much harder to get a quorum if we're going to require six people to be here if we have issues now, but being new to this, that's, that's my look on it now. Does anybody else have anything to say? Anybody else have anything in the ordinance? So, on this particular issue, it's okay for us to take back that you guys would rather stay in.
Put in the mic, please. May I make a motion that we continue with five members?
Yeah, it's just a discussion.
Just so I'm sure, and you can give me a head nod, I'll take back that you guys think we should stay with five.
I'm good there.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
It seems like it would be easier to get a quorum.
Well, and I will say, and maybe it'll come up in the next one, is, yeah, not having, not having enough members here when somebody's coming in, and we've got one set is, is a bad look, and so I don't think it's happened in a long time. We've always had alternates and been able to bring people up, so I think we're fine with five.
I only remember one time, several years ago, we only had four members, and we advised whoever it was that they had to have all four members and ask them if they would take a delay, and they decided to take the delay, come back next month.
Okay, well, that's what we'll take back then.
That's only one time, but yeah, it's a problem.
Okay, great.
So, anything else on this?
I have no other comment regarding the number of board members. I'd like to further discuss some of the things in item B.
We need to call that agenda item to order.
Yeah, right.
So, we're finished discussing item A?
Can the board make a resolution? I know that we can, would, would the board be willing to make a resolution as a general consensus that it would prefer to maintain the five?
We, that's what Steve was doing, was just getting a head, we don't, it's just a discussion item, so there's no, we just need head nods, and I think everybody's.
Not a motion, just a general resolution.
Yeah, I think everybody's in agreement that we leave it at five.
I think we're in agreement to stay with five. P and Z, they're all right with that. Steve, take that back to council. So, we'll move on to item B, discussion of the, regarding amending the authority of the zoning board of adjustment and the zoning ordinance to be consistent with state law, specifically local government code, section two-one-one dot zero-zero-nine.
This is where I would like to ask the city attorney to step in and maybe perhaps give us a review of some of these changes, perhaps in lay term, and tell us exactly what these changes are.
I can read you straight out of state law what your authority is.
And, and, and again, I was reading that summary originating the cause, and is that the changes would remove the specifics findings requiring for special exemptions and variances? Is that where these would apply?
Yes, sir. So, currently.
So, I would, I'd like to have a better understanding. I wasn't able to, you know, when I read through these, I've read through them three or four times, and I'm not an attorney, and so sometimes I have a little bit of difficulty grasping the concepts. So, I was hoping maybe you could review these a little bit and give me an explanation.
I'm not sure what you're asking.
Well, of what the changes would be.
So, if I can do a little staff summary here.
Okay, a summary. Maybe that's just what I'm asking for.
So, our ordinance, as it stands, the zoning ordinance, is a lot more detailed than state law. There is a specific list of findings that are required in order for you to approve a variance. We give you the little checklist when you consider a variance, and you have to check all those boxes. State law does not have that. There is, for the special exceptions, we have temporary, temporary exceptions defined, and there's a whole list of requirements. We have permanent exceptions defined, and there's a whole list of requirements, and these items are not in state law. It just basically says the board has the authority to approve a variance, a special exception, or an appeal. It's pretty general. So, we just want to give the board flexibility to be able to use whatever judgment you may have to approve variances, special exceptions, and appeals, rather than being tied to our local ordinance and the requirements that are listed in there.
Know where it was two, three years ago.
Actually, it was probably oh-seven, oh-eight, I think, that all those requirements were put in there. So, they've been in there for quite a while.
Is that when we started doing that checklist thing?
Yeah, that was with Arnold, when Arnold became our city attorney, he started that, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And under state law, under the variances, you still will have some checklist of when it's a variance, if it's not contrary to public interest, is in the state law, and it's due to a, to a special condition, a literal enforcement of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship, and so that the spirit of the ordinance is observed and substantial justice is done. Those will be your checkpoints with regard to a variance that is reflected.
That's always been the basis of what we've done.
Those sound very, very familiar to me.
Yeah, that's been our basis for everything.
As general guidelines, those are very familiar.
It's, it's mostly the special, the exception, the special exception, without the temporary and permanent special exception, is where the majority of our ordinance is a lot more detailed than state law is. So, the red lines that were in your back-up material are, basically, it's state law redlined as to what we would propose. This does not show what all we would be taking out of our current ordinance as it stands. So, no.
So, what, where do we stand on benefits to the city? Is it more beneficial to have something hard and written, or is it more beneficial for us to be flexible and make a decision? I can, I can see where the citizens, it would be beneficial that we have more flexibility, but where, where do we stand as the better good for the citizens? I mean, I, I think, I don't think council's going to appoint anyone up here that would make an oddball decision, but what's the, what we're discussing, and so what's the better path?
I think the intent at this point is more flexibility for the board. Currently, if something, you know, if it was, I mean, the purpose of coming to the board is for extreme situations, you know, where they can't meet the requirement. So, like I said, right now, your, your hands aren't necessarily tied, but you are to a point tied, especially when it comes to those exceptions, to what is written in the ordinance. So, anything outside of that wouldn't, you know, you wouldn't be able to consider.
The fact that it takes four people, you know, one or two people go off and left field, it's not going to hurt anything. You know, it takes four people to, to get us where we, where we shouldn't be.
Where does council stand on this? Sure, Steve. Steve, would you step up and give us counsel's take on this?
Well, before I do that, it's two-nothing Astros in the first inning.
Oh, good. Thank you, Steve.
This came up and actually was part of that same discussion, we were talking about the five that I initiated. Can I talk about that case now, or you want me to wait on that? Can I talk about that case now, or you want me to wait on that? Okay, so some of you were on, and you remember the case with the lady with the carport. It came in front of you guys like three times, and it was just a mess. And, and you, and you guys very soberly made, you know, made the call, and it was an outstanding call, and it put, it put the city in this unenviable position, because she then appealed to Galveston courts. And, and it put us in the position of if we won in Galveston, we would have been within our rights to tear her carport down, which is really bad optics, to be honest, you know, it carried down. But you guys, you guys had followed all of the rules, the rules were very detailed, and, and you made the right decision by the rules. On that particular case, when it got in front of the judge, so, so we were concerned on council because you guys had done a great job, and we didn't want to overrule you, okay? Second of all, we didn't want to create a precedence, you know, that, hey, it was our right to just politely ignore the city rules and, you know, build whatever you wanted on your property. At the same time, we didn't really feel a lot of energy in tearing down her carport. When it went to the, the court, we got, we got a good idea. We said, hey, it's in court, why, if the judge makes a settlement, or if the judge makes a, a decision, it's not a precedent. The judge make a decision, so Mary Kay worked with the attorneys, and we gave her some guidance and said, we, we require several things. We require that the, the structure be proven to be electrically sound, because it didn't have an electrical permit. We require that the site, that the, the building be checked for windstorm, and it met all the windstorm requirements, but this, by, you know, PE engineers would sign off. And third, she had to pay a fine of some sort, because we thought the fine indicated you done wrong. Okay? So Mary Kay took it to her, and they accepted. And so the judge, it was a court order. You know, it wasn't us, it wasn't you guys changing the rules and whatnot, but it was court order, and it all got settled. Okay, and, and she got all the inspections and the, and the most important thing is we didn't want that carport ending up five houses down destroying somebody's house in a, in a storm, you know, and we got that proven. The aftermath of that, we said, you know, we thought you guys didn't have enough freedom to make, to make the decision. You followed the rules and all that, and that's when Aubrey and them looked at it and said, hey, state law is much looser than what our own guidance is. If we loosened it up, we let you guys, because, because you're basically a quasi-legal entity, we let, we untied your hands to make a good decision. And so, so our thought process was if we do provide this flexibility, you all get more authority and more range in which to make the decisions, in which we, we trust you implicitly to do that. So that's the reason this is in front of you now. If you turn around and tell us no, that's fine, I'll take that back. But we're, we're, we're trying to actually give you more authority and more flexibility.
Steve said that was a decision made by the Galveston County judge?
Yes, so Mary Kay can give you more detail maybe, but, but we, we did a settlement, and the judge accepted the settlement, and so it's court order. It's a court-ordered settlement, it's not a, you know, we, we changed some rule, or you changed some rule. So that's how it ended up. So the most important thing, when we sat down and we thought about it, we had the mayor and me and a couple others, we said, well, okay, you guys also, well, most of you saw that new structure he has, it's very nice looking, you know?
Very nice.
But it was in, it was, but it was in the setback, you know? And most important thing was, we had no proof that it was safe. So we thought, well, what's most important, it's got to be safe. And that's why we required, we wanted to get those inspections done to prove it's safe. And then second of all, we wanted basically an admission of guilt, which is paying the fine. And third, we don't ever want to do that again, if we don't have to. And so thus, thus we wanted to give you guys more, more flexibility to do that. Any other questions?
No, I said, I personally appreciate that trust in us. Because we always like to work with our citizens. I mean, they're our neighbors, we like to work with them. And like you say, as long as we can make it, you know, good for the city, doesn't impair the neighborhood, you know, we want to work with them.
Doesn't create a horrible precedent, yes, exactly. And as you well know, when you guys, when you guys see these things, it only ends up with you if it's really an oddball situation, you know? It just, it just, they're never just down the fairway. There always something is strange about it, something was done right or wrong, or there's a, you know, there's a disagreement. It's always, everyone, you, you've been doing this for quite a while, and so if you run, you guys know that when you get them, they're always weird, they're always weird, you know? So, anyway, the point was to give you guys more flexibility.
Can I just share with the board? It's very common for the city ordinance to track state law. All of these other things were something that's very unique, based on my observations and working in many cities throughout the state. So it's not uncommon to just track state law and have the general language instead of the specifics that are really stricter. Although the, the law allows you to adopt an ordinance that is stricter, but it's uncommon, based on my experience, to have all the extra things in the ordinance with regard to your authority.
There was one other thing, I know that when we, when we go through the, through the ordinary system, at the end of it, we always tell them that their, if they lose their petition, that we generally tell them the only thing they have as a resource is, for an appeal, is through the county court system. Can you, can you enlighten me specifically? What, what are the appeals system? Because I know they can appeal to us directly before they go to court, because if I read this correctly...
No, your decision is final, and they can appeal under section, I'm just going to read you out of state law. "Any of the following persons may present to a district court, county court, or county court at law a verified petition stating that the decision of the Board of Adjustment is illegal in whole or in part, and specify the grounds of the illegality." So there, once you make your decision, they have a certain timeline. They have to present their petition within ten days after the day that the decision is filed in your office, which is with Aubrey, and you sign the order. And then they have, then they, they don't come back to you, they have to go to the Galveston County.
So that hasn't changed if, well, we have a, a small percentage of our city that's in Harris County, but they still have to go to the, the court system for any relief after us?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
So that hasn't changed at all?
No, sir, no. Not, not changed.
It was a little different in that one particular case, but that was an oddball mess, though. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, can we get like a nod of heads? Is everybody okay with just going to state, just being consistent with state law?
All right, going with state law?
I'm all for it.
I'm for it.
Yeah, yeah, just with those changes, I think the board suggested they wanted the five instead of that seven. And I think there was a minor correction about bringing up the...
Yes, we'll, we'll take a look at that for sure.
And I think that was just a minor correction, so.
Thank you for pointing that out, though.
To give us more flexibility, so we're in agreement here with that. So next item would be comments from board members?
Congratulations, I'd like to, yeah, I'm, I'm pleased to have a new board, a new director and vice chair, a new chair and vice chair for a change. I'm looking forward to that, and I'll be glad to do whatever I can to show you the procedure that we generally use, it's, it's simple.
Move adjourned? Well, thank you all, I appreciate it. Mary Kay?
Yeah, would you just go ahead and announce the agenda item, number six?
Sure. Number six is staff and/or council or board liaison reports. And that, Aubrey is you, between you and Steve and Mary Kay.
And Brian, Brian is our building official deputy director.
Awful quiet, all evening.
I don't have any staff reports, do you have anything to add?
Nothing, thank you.
Well, now move adjourned. We're adjourned, let's go watch Astros. Oh, we got to vote, we got to vote. All of those, vote for adjournment, raise your hand. None opposed? We're adjourned.